Good evening.
I don't want to check in my emails, it doesn't work.
Good evening, everyone. Citizens at home, staff, council. This council meeting will be post-production because we're missing one of our parks, so it's not live. I apologize for the inconvenience for everyone at home, but we're calling to order the Chisholm City Council meeting, January 25th, 2023. Susan, would you please take roll call?
Commissioner Halverson.
Present.
Commissioner Michael Amraka.
Present.
Commissioner Fauten.
Here.
Commissioner Hallabaugh.
Present.
Commissioner Vaki.
Here.
Mayor Lance.
Here. Okay, we'd like to adopt the agenda. There are a couple additions here. Under Larry, the Kamatsu Loader Lease Package added is the Resolution 0123-17 to go along with it. Should be in front of everybody. We would like to move Stephanie and myself. Stephanie will be F, I will be G. We're going to add Brian in there under E, and he will be taking up Resolution 0123-18 for Big Trout authorization. And then under myself, added on to number one, we need to add Margaret Gornick's application for the Police Commission. And I believe that's it for additions. So look for a motion to adopt the agenda.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If it's possible, would we be able to have further discussion on our consulting, the engineer, surveyor that we started last meeting? We didn't really take any action, we had a lot of discussion, but maybe something that we should address further if we could.
Do you want to all look at an action item for that?
Yes, maybe under miscellaneous at the end.
Okay. Under miscellaneous, we can add discussion with possible action regarding our engineering consultants?
Yep.
And with that, I would look for a motion to adopt the agenda.
Make the motion.
I'll second that, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Jed. Thank you, April. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Pledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Public participation. I believe we have someone here tonight. John, was it? Sorry, I couldn't see your last name. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is John Janek with JPJ Engineering. I know the city discussed some consultant engineering services at your last meeting. I thought it would be a very short period of time, five minutes, to maybe just introduce myself. Again, John Janek with JPJ Engineering, engineering firm. We have an office in Hiving, and we have an office in Billow. But our engineering office in Hiving is that myself, a senior project engineer who does all the design work. Our project inspectors are at Hiving and survey crews, so been available to help the city over the years. I've been involved with your fish street project, and I know there's been some discussion on maybe expanding out or doing some additional work. There was some bid to project last year, actually, I know the bids gave me a little bit higher. I think it was a seasonal thing with everything else kind of on a whack with the way things were bid last year, so. But that's about it. I just wanted to kind of introduce myself. I know a few of you, worked with Jim and Larry in the past on different projects, so. Thank you.
I appreciate that. And yeah, the last council meeting, we did discuss, you know, possibly having a pool of engineers and Colin, but thank you very much for everything you do and work you do in our city.
Thank you.
Moving on to council reports. Start with Jed tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I attended the PUC meeting last week. We talked about water, sewer, garbage, buildings, and pretty much the usual stuff. I want to say a big thank you to two individuals in the city that were actually walking around, shoveling out the corners and the sidewalks. We saw them a couple weeks ago, and I'd say thank you very much for helping people out because it helps the elderly people out when they can't get across the street, so. Thanks.
Thank you, Jed. Cheyenne?
Good evening. I attended the Precious Paws Board Meeting, I can't think of what that was called for a second. And I have the numbers for December. I don't have the 22 numbers for Precious Paws for Chisholm's annuals, but in December, Chisholm had six cats and four dogs that were brought to Precious Paws.
Excellent. I believe you went to your first HRA meeting too.
I did. Yes.
Excellent.
I forgot about that. I'm excited to serve on that board. It was a good conversation.
Excellent. I can't wait to hear more about it. Travis, good evening.
Good evening. Just a couple of notes. Sled to City as part of Holder Bear Days is February 25th, 10 to 4. And thank you to Bridget. She's jumped on board and helping out Larry and I with that, so thank you, Bridget, for doing that. The Hoops Club is having a pasta fundraiser, February 22nd, at Valentini's. The Chamber Annual Raffle is, the tickets are on sale. The drawing is February 15th. I believe it's at Tom and Jerry's, but I don't know that 100% for certain. However, get your Chamber raffle tickets because they sell fast. That's all I have.
Thank you, Travis. April, good evening.
Good evening. I've got a couple things. I'm going to take off of Commissioner Vaki. Polaroid Days in Chisholm is February 8th through the 26th. There's some awesome things going on. You've got Sled to City, and the Chamber of Commerce has a lot of things posted as well on their website and on their chain of emails that they send out, so you can also sign up for that as well. The Chisholm Community Education has some amazing classes for some students and some adults. You can check out those flyers on the Chisholm Community Education Facebook page or the Chisholm School District site. Let's see. Well, Valentini's is having a Valentine's Day special, so get your reservations in if you're interested in that. And then they've also got some cool things going on. I saw online that they're going to have Soup Saturdays in February 11th, 18th, and 25th from 11:30 to 1:00. They're also going to have a beanbag tournament on February 10th, and it's $25 per team. And starting February 24th, it's going to be All You Can Eat Fish Fry. And that's like my favorite place to go for fish fry. And as you guys know, we're still looking for boards and commissions applications, and we also got some in our packet tonight. And I know Bridget's got some really cool things going on. I've seen her Facebook page as well. She'll probably have a list of things to let us all know, especially that cool memorial bench program, to let all the folks know at home that they can purchase the bench in memorial of somebody, so I think that's awesome. All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Marty? Good evening tonight. Good evening.
Good evening. I attended a meeting at Minnesota Discovery Center regarding the potential grant from LCCMR for expanding Redhead, and that's all I have to report.
Yeah, thank you. As for myself, I was at that same meeting with Commissioner Halverson. Good news that IROC and MDC are going to be sharing with us tonight. I was also at the United Way for Senator Smith came to talk with us about some federal money that they're trying to, you know, bring into our area for early childhood education. And certain allocation's going to go to Chisholm, and a certain allocation's that go to Ely, and that can put close to $500,000 with a possible match from Icheblar into our area and into Ely. So very exciting news and definitely something that's very well needed, so. And that's all I have. That's all I have. City ambulance director. I see our interim director is not here tonight, but I would just like to take a moment to express how well she has done in Ms. Davis's absence. When you lose a leader, sometimes morale does take a dive, but Peyton Johnson has done a phenomenal job keeping everybody morale up. She's been very active and busy, and thank you Peyton for everything that you've done. So moving on to city fire chief. He's probably working a double again, so. Go on to city police chief.
I do want to have a report here.
Thank you. Building official, Mandy? City engineer?
Don Ford.
Bridget? City parks, rec? Good evening.
Good evening, Council.
Oh, I'm sorry, Larry.
Larry is next. I didn't think I had a report, but April did bring up the memorial bench programs, so maybe the community does want to hear about that. It's an existing program that has been there. I just gave the look of it a facelift, and so if you are interested in memorializing a loved one, you can purchase a bench and it can get placed in the city park, and you can always use more benches, so there is an idea. And then I did want to mention two things, and one is a position, and so is the other. One position is Chisholm Summer Rec, and that is a June through August position, and I'm looking for two coordinators. It's posted right now, so spread the word. Also, the youth center, which is run by the city, it's a nonprofit, however, we're looking for a attendant, a youth center attendant, and that's year-round, part-time, so please spread the word. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you, Bridget.
Thank you.
Good evening, Larry. Public Works. I couldn't see you back there, hiding behind Jim.
Thank you, Mayor.
I knew you had a report.
Just a quick report, truly. I like you. I had to hop over the snowbank out front when I walked in, and I just wanted to give everyone a little heads up. We're short staffed. We're about four people down right now, and we have a loader down which carries the snow blower, so we're unable to blow it and pick it up, put it in the truck. And Ziegler, our friends at Ziegler over there have the engine to our part of one of our loaders. So we have that third replacement motor in the budget, in the packet for you to discuss in a little while, and just kind of adds a little context. So we were hoping to rest that loader after the loader came, but everyone knows the supply chain things, and it's been pushed back a little bit, so we had to have some engine work done. So it's not a lot of snow out there, but we'll get it when we can. So with the cold snap coming, we really wanted to pick it up, so everything's cleaned up real nice and sanded, but we just couldn't get to it, so.
It happens. Still the best snow cleanup in the Iron Range, if you ask me, so. Thank you, Larry.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Library supervisor, Katie, good evening.
Good evening, everyone. We've got a really busy month coming up in the library. We have a winter reading program that starts, it's called Yeti to Read, so it's going to be for children, teens, and adults, and it's going to run November, or February 1st through the 28th. In addition to the reading program, we also are going to have something new this year, and it's called Blind Date with a Book. I don't know if you're familiar with it, but library staff, and with the help of our board members, chose a bunch of books, wrapped them up in paper, and then wrote like a bit of a description or a review on it, and the patrons get to choose a book that is kind of a mystery date to bring home and read, so we'll see how that goes in February. I think that's it.
Thank you, Katie. City attorney, Brian?
Thanks, Mayor. No formal report, but I am happy to field questions if the council has any for me.
Any questions? City clerk treasure, not here this evening. City administrator, Steph? Good evening.
Good evening. I do not have a formal report tonight unless there's questions for me.
Any questions? Moving on to consent agenda. There's a list of bills, communications, September 13th, 2022, library board minutes, December 6th, 2022, parks, trails, and rec advisory board meeting minutes, Central Masaba Medica Foundation, minutes of previous city council meeting, January 11th, 2023, payroll and overtime. If there isn't any changes, I would look for a motion and support to approve consent agenda.
Motion.
Thank you, Travis.
Will second.
Thank you, Jed. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. No unfinished business, moving on to new business. Chief manor, evening.
Both of my items are just informational to inform the council that I know that the gambling committee, gambling, I mean, I misheard, approved the application for, both of them are through the Kermit Club, one is for raffle at Tom and Jerry's on June 24th. They're getting everything out of the way right away, so they're way ahead of the schedule there, but for June 24th, I thought at Tom and Jerry's, and the second one was the gambling application for the Kermit Club for their large $8,000 raffle that they do every year, which will be held on March 20th, March 20th of this year, so.
Perfect.
It's informational.
More information. Congratulations, Chief manor.
Thank you.
New grandpa.
Thank you. New grandpa is a buddy, so.
Congratulations.
See you on Fridays.
Congratulations, and travel safe. Public Works, Larry.
Thank you again, Mayor, council. In your packet, I won't pretend that I'm an expert of what you're about to see. I left that to Eileen and Stephanie to thumb through, and so, but what I will tell you is the lease package is a source well contract, and that is competitively bid, and it's government something financing, and it's a half a percent under prime, what everybody else can get even, so. And they have a source well contract, which is under kind of like a state contract, so.
And we approved this, right, Larry?
We did, yeah.
I don't understand why.
It's just a format, and this is the bank paperwork, basically, if you want to sign for a loan, per se. So we approved the budget, the money's in the budget. We got a source well pricing on the loader, we visited all the vendors, and we, friends in Baltic Township have about the same loader as this, so, and they have service trucks, and they have ShopRite Virginia and such, so. We did all our homework, and it's all there for you. If you have questions on between pages 27 and 43, I'll try to help, but I can probably be not as much help. And then, secondly, after that, is the resolution, personally resolution, thank you, Attorney Lindsey, very good at writing these, compared to the sample that's in the packet, this is a little more to the point than. So first of all, though, is to approve the, is the lease package in front of you, and I believe it's to be able to have administrators grab a sign and execute the purchase of the lease agreement.
No, thank you very much. I know you've done, you have done your due diligence with this. It's definitely a needed piece of equipment, that's for sure. So I would look for a motion to approve the lease package.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Mayor, for resolution number.
Oh, no, just a second. That's a second, just all together, lease package.
And Mayor, if I may? Actually-
This is the lease package.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so what the resolution does is that the resolution both authorizes the terms of the lease package and then directs the staff to execute the documents necessary to make it happen. It's an all-in-one.
All-in-one.
April, let your finish.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Mayor, for resolution number 0123-17.
Thank you, April.
Support.
Thank you, Travis. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Larry.
Thanks, Larry.
Good call, Council.
Bridget, good evening. Anna, you're bringing some guests up, so.
Yeah, I'd like to invite my guests.
Jordan, Donna, Pete, please introduce yourself in case anyone doesn't know you.
Well, thank you, council, for having us tonight. My name's Jordan Metzup, and I'm the fund development and marketing coordinator at the Minnesota Discovery Center.
I'm Mindana Johnson, executive director at the Minnesota Discovery Center.
And I'm Pete Carroll, representing both Iron Range Offroad Cyclists, and I work for Bar Engineering Company, too.
So that's our introductions. Today, we're here to give a little bit of an exciting update as regards to the LCCMR grant application for the Phase 2 expansion of Redhead Mountain Bike Park. We've been working on this grant for just over a year with the city, and appreciate the city being our fiscal agent for this grant, and we're excited to announce that. The recent LCCMR Legislative Commission approved 1.66 million in funding for the Phase 2 expansion of Redhead. There is still additional processes that this has to move through, and currently, we're in a process, January through May, where LCCMR Commission is making a recommendation of this funding to the full Minnesota Legislature. From there, the bill will be considered and acted upon by the Minnesota House and Senate, and upon passage, the bill will go before the governor and be signed into law. So that would mean if things move through that process, and we hereby made that that process has been complete, LCCMR will move to approve work plans for our project, which we've been working with the city council on updating that draft work plan, and we would receive funding as early as July 1st, 2023. Our application for LCCMR, generally speaking, includes up to 12 additional miles at Redhead within the existing footprint of the initial proposal from the IRRB, so there would be no need for landowner agreements or permitting or anything of that nature, and we already have the corridors for the trails designed by the trail architect Scott Lindenberg, who did the work for the first phase of the project. And we hope to have more information soon, and we'll make sure to keep the council updated as this phase progresses, but that's the small update now, and we'd be happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Thank you very much, Jordan. Are there any questions on this regarding?
Can you just give a short, real, small blurb about what everything is in it? Like, I don't know any of the details.
So the whole application is built down into two activities. The first act, or the second activity will start there because that's the trail construction, the up to 12 miles, and we use the language "up to" to provide flexibility because you are building in a former mine pit. That'll give us, that'll give us some flexibility in the end mileages, end miles constructed. And then the first phase is made up of constructing additional amenities throughout the entirety of the trail system to include things like bike wash stations, informational kiosks, and a more enhanced signage, a navigational signage throughout the park and sense of arrival at the trailhead, which Pete will help us work on. And then the other two activities in the amenities portion of that section include the possibility of adding a pump track, a paved pump track, and a skills course, kind of like the one they have recently constructed over in Tioga called Pathfinder. So that's, that's pretty much the full scope of it.
Good. Thanks. Great work, guys.
Yeah, if this goes through, this helps alleviate a lot of, you know, the pain of us trying to go for this money and generate this money, so.
Appreciate that.
Thank you for your work.
Thank you for having us.
Do you have to have matching funding on any of the, on the projects?
Nope. All of the funding will come directly from the LCCMR Commission, and it'll be funding that'll be outside of our budget here for the city of Chisholm.
Can you also explain what kind of fun activities that you, how we're utilizing the trail right now, actually, what you guys got going on, just to let the folks know?
Yeah, well, right now, we're in our winter season. We're excited to be kind of exploring, expanding winter at Redhead Mountain Bike Park. We do have snowshoeing available and fat biking in the trail system on designated groomed trails, and we are working with IROC partners to expand our grooming efforts to offer more rideable opportunities throughout the year, but now Redhead with, thanks to the Chisholm Community Foundation, many other grateful partners and donors have allowed us to basically double the recreational opportunities in the last 12 months at Redhead to include biking, hiking, paddling, and swimming. So we continue to want to create a family-oriented experience that really serves the family as a whole, and not just maybe one member of that family who's an avid mountain biker. Our goal is to create that well-rounded experience, and it's coming together.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Library supervisor, Katie.
On page 46, we have resolution number 0123-16 to accept a donation from Daniel Swam in the amount of $100 to be earmarked for the Chisholm Library. And there is a little note here from Mr. Swam. In close, please find a donation check in the amount of $100 for the operations of the Chisholm Library. "I grew up in, I grew up in Chisholm in the 1950s and early 1960s. The library was my home away from home as a kid going to Lincoln Grade School. Thank you for all the wonderful hours I spent immersed in your books with fondest memories, Daniel."
Very nice.
Very kind.
So thank you, Daniel. I'm just looking to accept that resolution.
I would look for a motion and support.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Jed.
Support.
Thank you, Cheyenne. Actually, thank you, Daniel.
Yeah.
Excellent. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
All right, and then the next item, just informational, it's on page 48. This is an updated library use data from 2022, and these I try to get in your consented agenda every couple months or so, and I try to go over them just once a year, just so everyone knows what we're looking at here. So this is all updated for 2022, and in the year, we had 15,166 visits and checked over, checked out over 16,000 items. So our numbers are doing pretty good. If you go down to the bottom, you can kind of see the overview even back into 2003. So our numbers aren't quite back to pre-COVID, but we're still looking good. So we're averaging right now about 61 people a day that are visiting the library, to kind of put that in perspective. Yeah, I think, oh, and then the only other thing I wanted to point out, I feel like everything's pretty self-explanatory. The only other piece is the interlibrary loans sent and interlibrary loans received. We are part of a huge Arrowhead library system. There's like 50 libraries within that system, including school libraries, and every day we get a delivery of books and we send out a delivery of books. So the interlibrary loans sent in 2000, or last year, we sent out 2,000 of our items to go to other libraries, and we received 2,416 items that our patrons requested from other libraries. So those numbers are kind of cool, too.
Excellent.
Any questions on those? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Brian, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor. So I have, I have before you, there is Resolution Number 0123-18. This is a resolution authorizing property acquisition by eminent domain in conjunction with public safety building. If you flip that packet over, you'll see there's a map on the back, and if you look, there's, towards your bottom left-hand side, there's a small pie-shaped portion of property there. It's about 1.6 acres. It's owned by Big Trout Lake. We've been making tremendous effort to try and acquire this property by negotiation and just a resolution. We're getting to the point where we can't wait much longer to take this action to authorize what I'll call a parallel course of just acquisition through eminent domain or by taking, and I would ask that the council take a look and pass this authorization. It doesn't necessarily require us to go through the eminent domain process to acquire this property. At any time, we actually are at a point in the negotiation where we have a closing package that's been sent out. We've got funds that are set aside. All we need are a couple of signatures and some return documents, and we can close the transaction, but assuming that doesn't start, it doesn't happen in the very near future, we need to get this parallel course started. This is the first step down that process of a court action to acquire the property. So part of what's built in here is what's called, what we kind of commonly refer to or colloquially refer to as a quick take, which allows us to give a 90-day notice and take possession of the property even before the full action hasn't concluded. If there's any questions on it, I'd be happy to answer those.
I have one quick question. So if we're close to an agreement with Big Trout Lake, a financial sum of money, when you go through this kind of land acquisition, what happens then?
So realistically, we're not- So realistically, we're not, at this point, the number that we've negotiated for a sale of that property is not necessarily the number that will happen during or as a result of the, of the taking of the eminent domain proceeding. Under an eminent domain proceeding, the property owner is able to recover the reasonable fair market value of the property. And that's kind of what the taking proceeding is, is basically a two-step proceeding. The first part of the proceeding, which is generally not a fight, is basically to say, hey, this is a public purpose. It serves the public good that we're going to go through this process. The second part of the process, where typically a lot of the litigation or the fight happens, is you panel, you panel three experts that try and come up with a reasonable value of the property. Now, we've got a couple of things. Number one, we've had an appraisal done of the property. And number two, I would at least be of the opinion that the negotiated sum is evidence of what that fair market value looks like. But the panel of experts could come up with a number wholly separate from what we've negotiated here. That being said, I think it's to the city's advantage and not to get too far into it. But the property as it lies on the ground right now really isn't usable for anything other than the Public Safety Building. It's not developable the way that it sits. And it really, from a development or a commercial purpose, really doesn't serve much.
Almost worthless.
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, this is definitely something that I believe that we need to do going forward with our Public Safety.
Another question. Does, does it include this little tiny little sliver here? Or is it just this pie shape down here?
I believe, yeah, it includes both. So we're, yep, we're grabbing everything that we need there. And how that little sliver got, got left away is, it's just the division of a 40.
Right. The way that highway right of way came through there.
Yep.
Save this next time the county comes to visit us. All right. Well, obviously, if we're moving forward with the Public Safety Building, I know we're opening bids soon. It's definitely something that needs to happen. So I would look for a motion to approve Resolution 0123-18 and support.
Approve motion.
Thank you, April.
Second.
Thank you, Marty. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you, Brian. Thank you. Administrator Stephanie, thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. I have the Precious Paws contract in the packet. What we're looking at is renewing that contract. There is no change from the previous year. So we're just looking to continue our partnership with Precious Paws. They did include some statistical data about the shelter. And the representative wasn't able to be here tonight. But if you have any questions, he's more than happy to answer those. I'm just looking for a motion to approve the contract in the packet.
It's definitely a great thing for our community. Seems like there's a lot of kittens born inside that facility last year. They add up. But again, something that is very good for the community. So I would look for a motion and support to approve the renewal of that contract.
I will make that motion.
Thank you, Cheyenne.
Support.
Thank you, Travis. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, moving on.
The next item in your packets, the annual audit engagement letter for Sterling Company. What this is, is authorizes us to engage for the audit for the 2022 fiscal year, which just ended in December. So I'm looking for a motion to approve and move forward with Sterling Company for annual audit.
I think that's a little ran on my part. Anyone else has any, anything to add? Or else I would look for a motion to...
I'll make a motion.
We're just approving to keep them as a year?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you, Jed.
Second.
Thank you, Marty. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, moving on to myself. So we're starting with the application for the Police Commission. You have a couple in front of you, Jennifer Fleming, who has just done with her first term. And we have a new one from Margaret Gornick. Everybody remembers Margaret, I'm sure. I did speak with both of them today. I know both of them are very interested in serving on the Police Commission. You know, Jennifer made a good point that you get done with your first term and you start learning how everything goes. And then all of a sudden, your term's up and you're hoping to get on again. I talked with Margaret, and she also spoke about having years of experience and the ability to help out the commission. And, you know, I really don't think we can go wrong. I do like how Mayor Champa kind of helped, you know, continue things on to a two-year term cycle. Like I said, you get done with your first term and your second term, you're starting to gain momentum. And then all of a sudden, you know, you're up for reelection. So my opinion, I would, if I was sitting in a different seat, I would appoint Jennifer Fleming. But you can't go wrong with Margaret. So I will leave it up for more discussion.
Well, I'll make the motion to approve Margaret Gornick's application for Police Commission for a three-year term.
Okay. Thank you, April. Is there support?
Support.
Thank you, Cheyenne. Further discussion?
Both very good candidates. And there's, there's only one opening on that commission right now.
No, it's always tough. You know, you can only have one. You know, nobody, nobody wants to be the person on the outside. But, you know, I would support either one. So there's no further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
No.
Voting no. Councillor Vaki, Councillor Oliver. Motion carries. Thank you, everybody. Applications for Parks, Recs, Parks Trails Recreation Advisory Board. We have application for Richard Newbauer. And I believe we have two positions open on this, and we have, so we have two applicants. So I'd look for a motion to approve Richard Newbauer onto the Parks and Rec Board.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Marty.
Oh, second.
Thank you, Jed. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have a application for Brandon Fiedler, also currently on the Parks and Rec Board, looking to continue on, on to the other vacant seat. So I would look for a motion to appoint Brandon Fiedler.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, April.
Support.
Thank you, Travis. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Applications for EDA. We have Shelley Valentini and Jessica Martin have both submitted applications. Again, a fun one, where you get two people going for one seat. I did not get a chance to talk to Shelley, but I know that she was just filling in on someone else's vacant term. And she would love the opportunity to continue on with the EDA. I spoke with Jessica Martin this morning, also a new business owner in town. Very excited to help progress Chisholm and work with the businesses and establishments around here. So again, I don't think you can really go wrong. But, you know, I think Shelley sat in for about a year and a half, year.
It's about a year, yeah. On a six-year term.
On a six-year term. So I would, again, I would appoint Shelley Valentini if it was myself, so she can get the opportunity to actually come on there. Travis knows how slow things do move. So when you start getting momentum, it's good to carry on. Again, nobody wants to be the odd person out, but I would open that up for more discussion.
Yeah, I'm not on the EDA anymore. But before, the last year with Shelley has really been good. She's very involved. She's very knowledgeable. She's been, she's in her whole life. She gives a lot of energy to that board. So I definitely would, would support Shelley just because she was only filling in for one year, so she never really got a term. So she's on it. I would, I would support her. I'll, I'm not going to make a motion right now in case anyone else wants to add discussion to it, but...
Anybody else? Like, voice an opinion?
I was going through both, both applications. I mean, Shelley has a lot to offer, too, so I would support that as well.
Actually, no, she has an extraordinary history. So Travis, is that a motion?
Yep. If there's no other discussion, yeah, I'll make a motion to appoint Shelley Valentini.
Thank you, Travis, for support.
Second.
Thank you, April. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. I'd just like to take a brief second. Obviously, we have, you know, people that don't make it on to the boards. I just thank you very much for your interest. And please come back again on the next one. Please don't get discouraged. Application for Planning and Zoning, Lloyd Show. I believe we have one seat open and one application. Lloyd's currently on the planning and zoning board. I know he would love to continue on. So I'd look for a motion and support in placing him on to the board.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Jed. Your support?
Second.
Thank you, Marty. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Application for Library, John Polsich. Polsich, correct? Again, we have one seat open and one applicant currently on the board, I believe. I'd look for a motion and support.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, April.
Good guy.
Support.
Thank you, Travis. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Application for PUC, Bruce Matic and Larry Pervan Anzie. I believe we have three seats open on the PUC board. So this would fill two of them. And it's good to see we have three Chisholm employees who have retired and moved on, coming back to, get back to the community and, you know, keep paying it forward.
Maybe a few of these other applicants that we rejected would be willing to join the PUC.
Right. There you go. They're still open.
Right.
I'll let them know.
Yep, for sure.
So I'd look for a motion to approve Bruce Matic to the PUC board.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Travis.
Support.
Thank you, Jed. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Now I'd look for a motion to approve, appoint Larry Pervan Anzie to the PUC Commission.
Make that motion.
Thank you, April.
Support.
Thank you, Cheyenne. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have Letter of Support for Balkan Township of the Paul Bunyan Communications Border-to-Border Broadband Grant. Application for a fiber broadband project. Broadband's a great thing that, you know, certain agencies are pushing and helping, you know, extend internet access out into the rural communities. And I think this is a great project to support. So I would look for a motion to approve the letter of support. Is this like a motion to direct?
Just to approve.
Just... Look for a motion to approve the letter of support for Balkan Township.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Jed.
Support.
Thank you, Cheyenne. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Second to last, schedule a working session for project updates. A lot of things have kind of been changing. Opportunities have been changing, so we have a lot of projects on our forefront. So thank you, Steph, for bringing this up. But, you know, we should sit down and have a meeting about it. We were kind of talking, you know, we start getting busy here in the beginning of, end of January, beginning of February, especially with the Public Safety Building. Would it be possible to add this working session after our council meeting in February? On February 8th? Just do it after the meeting? They seem to have just been flying through here quarter after six. I don't know what Mayor Champa was doing for all these years. I'm sure they'll get more intense. But, yeah, I think that, that can really help out, I think, for schedules if we can just do it after. I'm not sure if that conflicts with anybody else. I don't know how long it would take. I mean, basically, an update, kind of go over some things, and hopefully give us a path.
Works for me. Works for me.
Okay, so do we have to designate a time for that, then? Or just at the conclusion of our council meeting?
We should probably do a motion just to set it if we've got, if we've got a set time for it. Doing it now makes it a little bit easier. And then we would just include notice with notice at the next council meeting.
Okay, so if we approved it for 6:30, we can always bump it back to seven when we get done, or?
Correct. Yep, so long as you start after the time when it's indicated and we're here. So...
Just not before.
Yep, so that anybody who wanted to attend would know that it's still going.
So I would look for a motion to schedule that working session for February 8th at 6:30 PM. That will give us a 15-minute break after the council meeting.
Motion.
Thank you, Travis.
Support.
Thank you, Jed. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Miscellaneous. Marty, I'll let you take this one.
Okay, at the last meeting, on our agenda, we discussed the options for our consulting engineering surveying firm moving forward. And we discussed two ideas. One, just moving forward with JPJ. And a second option of developing an RFP instead of sending it out to a lot of different firms, including JPJ. I think in the interim, if we are going to do the RFP and interview firms and discuss, it's going to take time. It's just a process. It just takes time. But in the interim, we still have work to do. And until we make a selection or go through a process and make a decision, I think we should just move forward with the JPJ in the interim on projects until we do reach that point where we have proposals and ideas and discussion and all of that. Because that could take us a month, two months, or longer. And in the meantime, there's going to be deadlines. There's funding opportunities. There's grant applications. There's project development. And JPJ's worked with Jim in the past on a lot of our projects. And so I think in the interim, it would be in our best interest to just use our services moving forward until we do come up with a Plan B.
Okay.
Myself, I feel like I could get on board with that. I do think like a Plan B, having a pool is good. But then, you're right, it does take more time because obviously you can go for RFPs. It's just going to have to come back with council approval. You know, it could be something that we just elect our city engineer and administrator to choose. But what that looks like, I guess, is a...
Yeah, we can certainly go through the RFP process. But with that time that it takes, we're going to be kind of in limbo here. And I think we need to have a dedicated engineer surveyor working with Jim and Stephanie and Larry in whatever capacity that is. I don't know exactly what all of our projects are, but the working session coming up, we should be discussing this, funding opportunities. And I know John Jamnik has lots, years and years and years of experience with funding and money sources and deadlines and how to go through the processes to get some of this money. And he could help us out. And if we need any type of service in the meantime, they can, I'd like to see them provide that service until we come up with Plan B.
So what do we need to do to get there? What are you proposing to get our EDA?
No, I would, I would propose that in the interim that we use JPJ Engineering as our engineering surveying consulting firm.
So I believe, oh, April, what Marty would like to do is to direct our staff to use JPJ for, you know, a period of time.
For the foreseeable future until we do have a Plan B.
Is anybody else, before we go deeper dumps, anybody else have any opinions or concerns, or?
I guess I'm just really confused. Don't we utilize JPJ?
We do. We've been using, we have been using SHN JPJ in the past, both firms. But I would, I would prefer... But, uh, I would, I would prefer to see us using JPJ exclusively until we come up with a different plan.
Makes more sense. Thank you.
I guess I think we go to the taxpayer to do, to put out suffer bids, so we should definitely develop an RFP in the meantime, as we utilize them, I guess.
Yeah, but this, this keeps, keeps them engaged. And we can use their services while we're developing an RFP and interviewing. And I would certainly extend that, RFP to JPJ.
Yeah, I have no issue with that.
Now, I would just like to see some sort of timeline on there, you know, that we could revisit it, you know, so if this is something that goes until, you know, the end of the year or until, uh, we have an RFP available.
Yeah, it could be, if we're going to go through the RFP, I think it's a good exercise to do that. But again, that takes, takes time to develop and, and, and review and come back to council and discuss and make decisions.
So Brian, uh, your opinion, would that be, um, you know, for a, a motion and support to direct the staff to utilize JPJ for projects? Obviously, it's a professional service and we don't have to go out for bids.
Right. It, it depends on what the utilization is. I mean, I, I think that, that would be an appropriate motion, based on the conversation that I'm hearing, would be just to direct the staff to utilize a particular, uh, vendor to, I mean JPJ for, uh, the ancillary, uh, engineering services that Mr. Johnson can't handle in-house with the resources we've got. Um, and then, and then I imagine we would get like a, a price sheet or a, you know, just kind of a, a list of prices and that would, we'd hold that on file. And then when we needed, uh, those types of services, then the standing motion or directive from the council would be to utilize JPJ.
Jim? Any issues?
No.
Okay, so we'd be looking for a motion to, um, direct our staff to use JPJ for any ancillary services, uh, outside of Jim's realm?
In the meantime, we can work on getting an RFP.
You're going to drop that first, Jim?
I will.
Marty, you'll help him?
Yeah. Basically, our applications, basically, I guess, I'm talking with Stephanie, we're looking after projects that we'll discuss at February eighth. JPJ is pretty much on board with all of that stuff already. So, uh, I guess that's what we're anticipating. And I guess, uh, what I'm thinking is probably the second half of this year, we'll put out a request and proposal to kind of tie in with next year's capital improvement projects or something like that, where we've got general engineering services, but we may have specific projects as well, where, uh, we can walk just, um, based on qualifications, select the pool of consultants that we want to use. When we get to specific projects, then, uh, in selections or, uh, engineered professional services, whether it's attorneys or, uh, engineering or architecture, those do not have to go through a bidding process. It's really a selection process of qualification-based, I guess, if you want to put it that way. And so we would, from that pool, we would solicit, uh, a proposal from them, which would come back to council for approval to do the feasibility reports, preparation plans, specs, or surveys, those types of things.
Okay, thank you, Jim. For everybody at home that couldn't hear, cause there's no microphone in front of them, he's on board, he will help out with, uh, creating an RFP and, uh, you know, utilizing. So. Is that the motion we're looking for? Is that what you have?
Yes. I'll make that motion.
Okay, thank you, Travis. Support?
I'll support.
Thank you Jed. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Anything else? Anybody would like to bring up? No? I would look for a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Thank you, Travis.
Support.
Thank you, Cheyenne. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.